Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All city council members, if you are willing, will you pray with me tonight? God of heaven and earth, thank you for your mercies that are new every morning because today we need it more than ever, I think. Lord, you give us an unwavering call to do justice. You tell us to defend the cause of the fatherless and the widow, to love the foreigner residing among us, to provide for the hungry, the thirsty, and the naked, and to love our enemy. Lord, it seems overwhelming to do those things and to live at this moment in time and try to do those things. So today, may your Holy Spirit fill us with hope. Remind us that we're to follow your will, to love our neighbor, to take up the call to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. God, we trust that you are good and that you do good for our local, state, and federal governments. God, help us and our elected officials as they allocate the necessary resources for serving the people, for creating change, combating this pandemic, doing justice, and being an example of good to all members of this city. God, we need healing as a people and as individuals. Would you grant us the healing that only comes from you to our minds, our bodies, our spirits, and our city? Teach us to be faithful people in these times of crisis. Help us to follow the footsteps of Jesus as you glorify his name in our city. Equip this governing body with wisdom, understanding, and everything needed for bringing peace and prosperity to this city. Thank you for this city, our home of Twenty-Nine Palms. God, grant us mercy in Jesus's name. Amen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Belderein?
Here.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Here.
Mayor Klink?
Here.
We have no closed session announcements, changes to the agenda. We have no changes. Announcements, these proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website at www.29palms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going on our website and clicking on the meeting agendas link. We have no awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations, and council comments and reports of meetings attended. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did MBTA via Zoom, and basically, our concern is ridership, getting back to where it used to be. But other than that, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Belderein?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I attended the CG's chain of command via Facebook due to the COVID, the amount of people who could be there. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Yes, good evening. I also attended the Marango Basin Transit Authority meeting, and yes, ridership was discussed, among a few other things. And then also, I assisted in making food boxes with Marango Basin Healthcare District, and the food distribution will be this Saturday. So if you know any of our neighbors, friends that are in need, please have them to come out. The location here in Twenty-Nine Palms would be off of Split Rock. That's it.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Protem Mintz?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, my meeting is until next week with the air quality, so I actually had none this week.
Okay. All right. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody that's celebrating a birthday in September here in the Marango Basin, especially here in Twenty-Nine Palms, a very happy birthday. I also attended the turnover of generals. I'd like to wish General Turner the best as he goes to Oceanside to further his commands, and welcome general journey to Twenty-Nine Palms, and we look forward to working with him here in Twenty-Nine Palms. We'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council. City council, in its capacity as successor agency to the former Twenty-Nine Palms redevelopment agency, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on consent counter items prior to the city council action. Do I have any council members that would wish to pull an item? Do I have anybody out in the audience that would like to comment on the consent calendar? Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, bring it back to council for possible motion. Oh, did you have your hand up?
No, I don't understand what you're saying.
Oh, is it because of this?
No, I can hear you first.
Oh, okay.
Did you ask for people to come up to the podium?
Not for public comment, for consent calendar only, right now. Yeah.
Well, I may we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Mintz, and seconded by Councilmember O'Gillvy, to approve the consent calendar. Roll call.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Belderein?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Okay. We will move on to public hearing, Tourism Business Improvement District, T-Bid.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna take off my mask and make it a little easier to speak. So this is the annual reauthorization time of the year for the T-Bid, the Tourism Business Improvement District. The agenda item is loading right now, kind of a large, large item. Just by way of background, just by way of background, this is the fourth year of operation of the T-Bid, if it does reauthorize. The T-Bid has been formed under the 1989 laws. There's two versions of how the T-Bid can organize, the 1989 laws or the 94 laws. We're under the 89, which is an annual reauthorization process. Break, break. Turn your mic off. Oh, I'm sorry. So the purpose of the T-Bid is to advance the tourism industry within our community. Affectionately, we say, you know, to bring those heads in those beds. So the T-Bid process is self-funded through stays by our visitors into our communities, into the hotels, motels, and vacation home rentals at a one and a half percent, you know, rate as a fee that goes into the T-Bid. This year, or this coming year, given the reduction due to the COVID pandemic, we have reduced our expectation of resources, but the resources that we'll generate from the T-Bid is $178,000 in this coming year. The resources are governed, if you will, by an advisory board. Ultimately, the council approves the budget annually, but there is an advisory board that oversees the resources and the marketing director. The members of the advisory board, some of which I think, or maybe all of which, are here this evening, are members of the hotel motel vacation home communities. They help and guide the spending of the T-Bid, again, for the furthering of our tourism industry. As you can see from the attachments, on the staff report, we have the marketing plan or the annual report that was originally approved and created by the T-Bid Board. Then last council meeting, the council approved that budget. Also attached is the original ordinance, ordinance 278. And as the process for this public hearing, and this public hearing, as it relates to the reauthorization and how the reauthorization work is, if there is not over a 50% protest, then it reauthorizes. So as part of the process, there was a letter that was sent to all the affected businesses, the hotels, motels, vacation home rentals, that was sent out September 1st. Also, a public hearing notice in the newspaper in the desert trail that was on September 2nd. So, Mr. Mayor, we have done all the proper steps associated with the reauthorization, and staff would be happy to answer any questions, along with the T-Bid Board is also here today if the council has any questions. I did receive, although it didn't say, and I know Vino is here this evening, and I think all the council received the letter, it doesn't really say it's a protest. I'm sure he can kind of clarify if it is a protest or not, but I think all the council members did receive that email letter requesting an extension of the T-Bid. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Frank at this time? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I have Vino Naraj?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, thank you, City Manager. As you know, that we own and manage the City America's Best Value in Oasis Inn and Suites. You heard this evening, our City Manager said that we had more than 50% vote. To my knowledge, there's a major hotel that's going through some real tough times, and it's public knowledge, they are almost in BK. I received a letter from the city that was postmarked November 8th, and only received it on the 16th. No, no, September, sorry. Please accept my apology. And I've been in the hotel industry 30-plus years. My wife and I combined, bringing just under 70 years combined experience. And in my opinion, we at our hotels have not seen an increase in our business, just like how City Manager said, heads and beds. Now, I'm not saying that I don't want to move forward with the T-Bid. What I'm saying is that rather than making a decision today, what we need is, we need some proper data to reanalyze this, whether the T-Bid is really increasing our business or not. What I'm asking for is the number of rooms that was rented in the years 2014, 2015, 2016 versus years 2017, 18, and 19. I'm not asking for 2020 due to COVID. The T-Bid is to give us hoteliers a detailed major marketing, and next to that line item say us that when they went to San Diego and did marketing, how many heads did you pull from San Diego to come into our beds? That's what I'm asking for. I would like for an independent company to do a feasibility study, whether the T-Bid is really working out for us. When the vote was done to get 50% or more of the hoteliers that didn't vote, they were classed as they voted. Now, 2017, our City Manager approached me, and I have emails from him, verbal conversations, making a promise that at any time, if we have a question whether the T-Bid is working out or not, we can bring this to a hall and revisit it. All I'm saying is that tonight, do not make a decision to propose that the T-Bid go further for another one year. Let's go ahead and defer the decision for 90 days. We'll still collect the T-Bid money in the next 90 days and pass it on. When we get the data, we analyze it, sit it, let's see whether this thing is really working out.
Okay, Vino?
That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, thanks. Those three minutes. Okay. Do I have anybody else out in the audience that would like to talk on this matter? All right, seeing no hands, I will bring it back to council for discussions and more questions. Actually, is Brienne in the audience? I thought I saw her. I have a question for Brienne.
And there's Ash out there, too.
You couldn't duck away, sorry, Brienne. So a couple weeks ago, when you gave your report, it sounded pretty positive that things were going pretty well. Is the rest of the board, are they pleased with the way it's going?
And I have the full board here, too, if you'd like any of them to speak or comment.
Well, you know, if they don't want to speak, that means they're probably agreeing with you. So in your professional opinion, obviously, this year, it's going to be tough to get people to come to be tourists this year in anywhere, so this would kind of be an important year to have, to get our name out there and have the T-Bid. Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't know if anybody else has any questions for? Anybody else? Did she want to talk to? Patricia, did you want to talk?
I'm Patricia Knight. I am a serving member on the board, representing a vacation rental. I've been on the board for approximately a year now. I just want to say vacation rentals aren't the enemy here. Vacation rentals have been in existence for decades. Consumers' needs and wants have changed most recently, and let's see, where was I? They changed, especially with companies like Airbnb and HomeAway and Booking, just kind of bringing vacation rentals.
Patricia, can we keep the vacation home rentals out, just for the T-Bid right now?
Okay.
Okay? And how we're doing?
Okay.
Because we have on the agenda also vacation home rental, at which time you can talk.
Okay, so I will hold on till then.
And when you do talk, and you haven't filled out a green form, if you would, go in the back and, yeah, and this gentleman?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm Rakesh Matha, I'm the chairperson for the T-Bid, and as far as your comment about the T-Bid, all I can say is that, you know, with the efforts that we have put in, the tourists and the numbers that you are going to see in the reports, that I'm sure that Frank and Brienne would be more than glad to share with you, it will not only show that even during these tough times, we have not only targeted the drive-by markets, which are the local markets, but we've also targeted the markets that are outside. As far as the financial health of the T-Bid is concerned, I'm very pleased to announce that we have a reserve. So considering the COVID-19 pandemic, we've been able to survive without even the hotels and the vacation rentals contributing to it, thanks to the reserves that we did from the budget that we passed in the past. As far as going forward is concerned, our goal is not only to sustain, but the goal is also to expand. And the marketing plan that was created has been modified every year, whenever the T-Bid has been renewed. So if anybody's interested, they're more than willing to look up the marketing plan and see what we have done to the marketing plan to not only sustain, but to expand and get more visibility into Twenty-Nine Palms and get more tourists in. So if you have any further questions, I'll be willing to answer that, but, you know, you can see what we have accomplished in the limited two years that we've been in business.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, can I add something?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Ash, and then you.
Good evening, everyone. I've been a serving member since the inception of the T-Bid Board. My name is Ash Maharaj, and I own the Harmony Motel. We practically led the whole marketing plan from 2017. I've been here from 2004, and we went through various marketing trials with the city, but nothing has proven to be more effective than the T-Bid, than the tourism business plan of what we have done in the last three years. It shows in our TOT, in our financials, between 2017 to 2019, the figures speak for itself in terms of how much each marketing program brought. That's a little absurd. How do you calculate that data, that a social media marketing campaign has brought in 50 heads for a specific hotel? I'm baffled as to how you will calculate that, but the Smith report that we used in 2017 showed the ADR of Twenty-Nine Palms, and it showed the number of rooms that Twenty-Nine Palms was consuming. Now, bear in mind that the Smith report does not take into account all 16 hotels. It predominantly only deals with the franchise hotels that give in their data in. So a small hotel like the Harmony Motel or the Twenty-Nine Palms Inn, their data is not inputted into the Smith report. That is what we discovered in our research when we were doing the T-Bid plan at that point. So in terms of where we are today, I think it's a great effort, and stagnating anything for 90 days, because all our reports, all our meetings, everything has been open to the public to come in, to comment, to question us, to find out, and enough time was given for anyone to make that analysis based on our reports. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to also remind everybody that there still is a social distancing, and we need to kind of honor that in the back while you're standing in the back unless you're family members, so kind of please spread out a little bit. Appreciate it.
Mayor, in fact, I want the whole council and the T-Bid members to understand, I'm not going to cut my nose to spite my face. I do have a copy of the Smith travel report that was submitted in the T-Bid. When the time I say defer the decision, we're still going to collect the money, and we're still going to do the marketing. All I'm saying, make the decision. Now, basically, having reserves doesn't say that we are successful. I'm a businessman, and basically, I'm not saying that I want to know how many heads and beds we got in a specific hotel. We can do an overall thing. Get me the data I am requesting. I bring a lot of experience to the table. I've applied twice to the T-Bid, and I was not approved. My son, who also managed the place, got a double degree from UNLV in hotel management and operations, and his master's from the USC was also turned down. I don't know whether the T-Bid is afraid that if I get on board and I start finding out something. So all I'm saying, give me the data. I'm not on the T-Bid. Give me the data, let me analyze it, and we'll move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tony Naraval, I'm the owner of Sunnyville Garden Suites. I think it's very important to proceed with the T-Bid at this time, and if Vino wants to review this T-Bid, we'll discuss it after COVID. My reasoning is that most of the tourists that I get are from the local staycations, in other words, LA, San Diego, San Francisco, right? Because they're not, they can't travel. I mean, instead of spending their money to Kabul or to Hawaii, they're spending it here. So we need to push our clientele, our T-Bid advertising, to this metropolis, because that's very important right now, because they're spending. The money's there. The money, everybody has this, I call it spendable income that they have, because most of them are not commuting, they're not spending in gas, therefore, they want to stay cation. And by advertising locally, again, those metropolises, we will get them here. And believe it or not, at 115 degrees here, my hotel on a weekend, I'm fully booked. So, I mean, I've never had that kind of occupancy before. Now, only on weekends, I mean, I gotta say that, it's only on weekends, right? But it shows that people are spending, they have money to spend, and they want to spend. Nobody would come here at 115 degrees. I've never seen it, but they're coming because they have the money to spend, and they can't go anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion questions. Did you want to talk about this one?
Not about this. Are you opening it to the public?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll let you know. That's all right.
Cindy, what resolution is it?
What is it?
Oh. Cindy, what resolution is it, please?
Do you, can I, can I just, excuse me, just for a minute? Did you make out one of those green slips?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just asking what resolution, because I'm ready for a motion, if you are, Mr. Mayor. If anybody else has anything?
If anybody has any questions or anything?
Well, I make a motion.
I don't know if it can be done, I was listening to Ash, it would be kind of hard. I would think that you would be able to tell who came from where and what they came, you know, who they heard it from, and are they going to tell you that they heard it from the T-Bid, that they came to Twenty-Nine Palms, you know, heads in beds? So it's kind of, I think that might be, if you could maybe get it?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, one of the things we do have, because most of our marketing is digital, so when people come to our website or visit 29 website, and they leave our website and go then to the hotels, we have that report of, you know, them coming to our T-Bid and going to the hotels. Now, what we don't know is what the hotels do with it at that, they close a deal, we don't know that. But we do know when they come, we bring them in digitally, and they go out digitally, we have that data.
Okay.
So can we share this data with Mr. Vino?
Yeah, absolutely. We bring it, I think every meeting, we bring it to our board meeting, you know, for distribution.
Okay. I just want to, I know we're all being transparent, I want to be transparent. And also, Mr. Vino, I know yourself and your son applied for the T-Bid, your wife also did too, and she was a finalist and a nominee, she pulled her nomination, so I know you're saying you and your son didn't get to be on there, but your wife was the last time going to be looked at, nominated, and she didn't want to do it, and she pulled her nomination, so.
I think also, we are the third highest T-Bid, I mean, T-O-T, did you say? Oh, Mr. Vino, by the way.
Oh, I'm sure you are, I'm sure you are, I was just saying.
And we don't have a problem with the T-Bid.
Okay.
I got you.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2019, confirming the levy of the assessment for the T-Bid.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Mintz, seconded by Councilmember Wright, to adopt resolution number 2019, confirming the levy of assessments. Roll call.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Belderein?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Okay, discussions and potential action items, Southern California Edison Inspection Fees for Undergrounding?
Yes, thank you.
This is for Project Phoenix, right? Yeah, I have to excuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item in front of you this evening, staff is recommending to approve the NV5 proposal, not to exceed $40,000 to inspect the undergrounding work from SCE Southern California as Edison and their contractor, which is Hotline. Just by way of background, as part of Project Phoenix, and actually, under current construction now, is the undergrounding project of Project Phoenix. So it'll be all the high-powered lines, you know, that are crossing the site and that will be ultimately underground. On each one of our individual personal Edison bills, there is an amount there for 20A processing, which is undergrounding fees. The city, over time, has accumulated $1.6 million for this project. The, about a month ago, as this project was starting to get ready to construct, and one important piece here, which explains this, so as the council is aware, early on in the project of Project Phoenix, Rule 28 traditionally, traditionally, is for undergrounding in projects like city halls and parks, things- is for undergrounding in projects like city halls and parks, things that are already created, already there, right? So you have a curb line, right? And then that curb line sets the depth of where all the undergrounding facilities will be. And so we had to go to the CPUC, which is the California Public Utilities Commission, to lobby on the city's behalf to allow us to do this development project. Again, that's not traditional, which traditional is city halls that are already done, parks that are already done, that already have a curb face. So about a month ago, as this project was getting ready to start and working with Edison, one of the things that we discovered in there is without that curb line, Southern California Edison was passing the responsibility to the city if the depths of the lines weren't correct. And later on, we discovered it, at our expenses, we would have to relocate those. Well, that could be very expensive. And so in that process, we decided that we needed to have an inspector come out, a daily inspector, that shot the depths. You know, since there's not a curb line, they got to shoot the depths. And those depths needed to be within plans. And so that will ensure that once we develop the project, that those depths are accurate and wouldn't incur the cost to replace. So in your staff report this evening, we are requesting $40,000 for this inspection service that is an allowable expense. Inspection fees are an allowable expense out of the 1.6 million of the 20A. And just for full transparency, so we didn't delay this process, my authority as city manager is $25,000, so we allowed the contractor, NV5, to start the inspection where Edison is constructing right now, but wanted to bring it to the council for approval since it exceeds my authority of $25,000. So that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
No.
Anybody in the audience have any questions on this, on the item? Let's flip my thing off. Item eight. All right, bring it back for possible motion discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So I, I would say I make a motion for NV5 proposal to be accepted.
Not to exceed $40,000.
Not to exceed $40,000.
I have a motion from Councilmember O'Gillvy and seconded by Councilmember Belderein to approve the NV5 proposal not to exceed $40,000 to inspect the undergrounding work by SCE and their contractor. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Belderein?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temminz abstained? Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved 4-0-1.
Okay, move on to number nine, channel trail grant application. Application for grant funding for the 29 Palms Flood Control Channel Trail. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Travis.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's Frank's mic, but we could hear Joel fine in the vote, but we couldn't hear Frank very well back there. I mean, I wasn't, I mean, I couldn't listen too much, but I mean.
I'll, I'll speak much louder.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Travis. I was just letting you know what the crowd was saying. They're getting restless.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, well, this is actually kind of a pleasant surprise to bring to you and the city council. Back in October of 2019, per your guidance, we did submit a grant application for Prop 68, Greenways and Trails Program, to begin funding our 29 Palms Flood Control Channel Trail. This trail has been in many of our plans for over 20 years, our Parks and Rec Plan, our Trails Plan, our general plan, and most recently, the Morongo Basin Active Transportation Plan, where it was rated ranked number one of all the trails within the Morongo Basin. So we submitted a grant March, we got our letter saying, nope, you did not make the cut. You know, it's all based on a scoring system. They got a whole lot of application, and I think like 10 times what the amount of funds that they had to give away. Well, about two weeks ago, we got another call and said, well, guess what? One community dropped out, you're next on the list. Can you get ready for a site visit in about one and a half weeks? And so we did, we put, put the presentation together, gathered our partners with flood control, gave a presentation, which is step two in the process, very similar to our CCNR grant for the Joshua Tree Visitor Center. And by the end of the day, we got a call to say you, you can move to step three. So essentially, that's what this is. This is authorization to submit the documentation that they will need for step three, you know, a lot of the same type of stuff we submitted before, deed of ownerships, agreements, it's a lot of, a lot of paperwork. Doesn't guarantee that you will get award, but it's a very good sign if you, you make it to step three. So that's what this is, is they do require a resolution, authorizing the application among a lot of the other documentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Yeah, so if you could just talk a little bit about what the trail would look like, it's, it's.
I sure will. In fact, I've got a presentation loaded here. This is the same one that we presented to the state, and I won't go through all of it, but.
Just kind of what it's going to look like.
Yeah. So it, you know, it is this intersection between Adobe Road and Split Rock Bridge. You know, most of you are aware that the city has under design a, a bridge at Split Rock. Right now, it's currently at grade crossing, and the idea is the trail would tie into that bridge at grade, so you wouldn't have that dip in the road anymore. Let me do it down here. So this is just the plan, it would be on the south side of the banks of the flood control channel. The reason why we chose this section is the banks are mostly hardened, unlike other parts of the flood control channel, which are not, and we know from the rainstorm last year that there was some erosion there. We wanted to make sure that we weren't building a trail that would be eroded. At each end, there's a trailhead, a very simple trailhead, bench, trash can, some landscaping, signage, bike rack type of thing. At the Adobe Road trailhead, we have a water bottle filler, and we're hoping to do some public art there as well. And then at the Split Rock trailhead, same thing, except there's an educational plaque. Really want to kind of focus on flood safety. Many of you know, we had that horrible incident there with the Marines family that drowned. So also wanted to take an opportunity to educate people about that. Essentially, it's a 10-foot wide concrete trail. There's a approximately six-foot wide DG running track, trail path alongside of it. We would kind of push the trail close to the fence line. We would also be installing additional fencing where it does not exist, to protect private property. And then that's basically it. It's, it's a very simple design. We did that intentionally so that flood control could easily maintain the channel. We didn't have a lot of, you know, landscaping along the edge and, and things like that. And so that's the design that was submitted, and they're asking us to move to step three.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Offhand, do you know how many steps it is in this process?
Uh, the, it's three steps total. So the first step is kind of the, I don't know, the, the call list, I guess you would say, where they, they definitely trim it down for the huge amount of requests they, they get. Then there's step two, which is the actual site visit. In this case, it was done virtually, given COVID. And then step three is, is the final step, that's submitting of the documentation, but you don't get approved until they have verified everything and it meets their standards and is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else in, anybody in the audience wish to comment on this, if you could come to the podium?
I have a question, do you know about this, but is it lit at night?
We're not putting, you know, lights along, but we're putting the solar lights actually in the concrete. So that was the idea, is that there's these sort of round solar lights that you can bed in the concrete and use this power of the sun to light them up at night, rather than a lot of overhead lights along the trail.
Right, because I'm curious about the safety, you know, when we're hot, people do their activities on these walkways at night. I just want to make sure it's safe and lit. Is there any way that anybody can, I guess we're relying on cell phone and call for help?
Yeah, yes.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you, up here, can you state your name?
Oh, yeah.
For the record.
And Starb City, Diverse Sky, Las Vegas.
Thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Hey, I have a question about this project. What's the length of the running track, Travis?
What, sorry?
The track to run, how long, how many miles?
The length of it?
It's 2,000 linear feet.
2,000 linear feet.
So it's not quite, almost half a mile, I guess.
Would you be also putting water fountains?
No water.
So that, I mean, people can drink water if they feel thirsty?
Yeah, there is a bottle filler and a water fountain, fountain, drinking fountain.
Drinking fountain, yes.
Not a big fountain. That's at Adobe Road.
Yeah.
Yes.
That'll be, and would you just have one or would you have a few?
Just one at Adobe Road is what was proposed.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah. How, how many miles is the whole trail going to be when it's all done? Do you know?
Uh, all done, you know, originally, it was proposed at, in fact, we got the statistics right here, 6.8 miles. But there's a portion that we, we think we really want to take another look at, and that was the portion east of Utah Trail. That's almost kind of redundant, given the fact that we have the Class II trails on Utah Avenue, and then hopefully with the grant to extend the trails down to Amboy Road. So that portion really is, is not needed, but, you know, the portion that definitely is needed is from Adobe to Utah to make that connection to Lucky Park, and ideally to the west to make the connection to 49 Palms Canyon, you know, down the road.
All right.
Yeah, Mesquite's on about two miles. Good?
Back and forth, back and forth. Are you still on the Mesquite Springs, then? We have one more hand back there?
Just a quick question for clarity. So it just goes from Adobe to Split Rock, it doesn't go from Split Rock onto Mesquite?
That's correct, not at this point.
Okay. Mary Jane Bingham.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this is just.
The one first phase, yeah, yeah. And, and let everybody know, the Flood Control District will be doing some major work in the Donnell Basin to kind of deepen it and allow it to store more floodwater. So that work has to be done and cleared before we can think about a trail there.
Yeah. Okay. Bring it back to council, motion?
Resolution number.
Oh, okay. They're doing it.
That's not a good number.
All right. See, I'll make a, um, make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2020, approving the application for grant funding for the 29 Palms Flood Control Channel Trail.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Wright and seconded by Councilmember Belderein to approve, adopt Resolution 2020, approving the application for grant funding for the 29 Palms Flood Control Channel Trail. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Gillvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Belderein?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temminz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Thanks, Travis.
Item number 10, Vacation Home Rental Policy Discussion.
Well, thank you.
Speak up, Mayor, City Manager.
I think I speak close, everybody hear me okay now back here? Yeah, good, okay, thank you. Let me just pull this up here real quick. So thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item in front of you this evening is a future agenda item request, looking at our vacation home rental policy, or short-term rental policy. I'm sorry, just pull this up real quick. And just by way of background, the, this policy has been in place since 2015. I think it was February, I believe, of 2015 that it went into place. Just some, some background and some statistics as it relates to VHRs, and it, and the ordinance, the original ordinance is attached to this staff report. Currently, there are 80 vacation active, anyway, vacation home rentals that are within our city, and 10 right now are pending. The city, by its statistics, has 5,830 single-family residents, single-family residents in our, in our town, in our city. And so 80 of them, if you look at it from a statistical perspective, it's, it's 1.4%. So 1.4% of our single-family houses in our city are vacation home rentals. I know a lot of conversation has been about Indian Cove, and just statistically there, there are eight vacation home rentals in Indian Cove with over about 400 homes there, and it's just under 2%. So a little larger than the 1.4 average of the city, but still under 2%. Attached to the staff report, here is a map, and this map, let me just kind of pull it over here a bit. Let's see here. So this is a map of the city, and what we did is use it kind of as like a heat map for vacation home rentals in this city. And you could see they're, they're fairly spread out, probably the most concentration, just looking at it visually, is in, you know, probably the Hanson Track is probably the most of the vacation home rentals within our city. Also, within the staff report, we have a statistic here, and as it's pulling up, oops. Awkward silence as it's waiting to, to load here. The, this next statistics, which, which I'll show to you, is vacation home rentals in the, in the Morongo Basin as a whole. And I know it's somewhat of an eye test, kind of small there, but let me kind of make it a little larger here. So the, oh, I don't know, what color is that? Yellow-ish, baby food yellow, I guess, is, is the vacation home rentals in the Morongo Basin. As you could see, you know, we have, the, the city of 29 Palms has the least amount of vacation home rentals per community. Morongo Valley has more, Pioneer Town, Yucca Valley, Joshua Tree, the zip codes of 92277 and 78, you know, Desert Heights and, and Wonder Valley. So those combination of those have, have more than the city of 29 Palms. The enforcement, and we have our captain, Luke Niles, here this evening that can answer any questions that the council may have. The, the Sheriff's Department, in talking to Captain Niles, they do not have any enforcement issues here in the city of 29 Palms. They're, and, and they just had this conversation, he told me last evening in the town of Yucca Valley as well. The, the unincorporated area of Joshua Tree, there are issues in Joshua Tree, probably because of the magnitude of how many there are in Joshua Tree, but currently, within the city of 29 Palms, we have not had any issues with the Sheriff's Department. Now, that does not mean that there hasn't been calls. However, there hasn't been any enforceable incidents as it relates to vacation home rentals. You know, in front of each of the homes, and I know this was a discussion as we were putting together the ordinance, there's a sign in front of the home with the owner's or the property, property manager's telephone number. And as part of the, of the policy, they, you know, if there are issues, they need to call that, and that person or persons need to address any of the issues. So there is a mechanism to, to be able to deal with issues as it relates to disturbance. Catching them, you know, those that don't follow the, the rules, you know, we have been, as far as TOT is related, we have a voluntary collection service with Airbnb that voluntarily collects that service. I know Mr. Tony Narval left, he called me today about VRBO, Vacation Rentals by Owner, and they have a voluntary collection service too, so we'll probably sign up with them to start that service as well. In addition to that, we have a third party that looks for those unlicensed vacation home rentals in our community so we can catch them and make sure that they comply with all the regulatory steps to be set up as a vacation home rental. Again, awkward silence as I wait for it to load. You know, there are regulatory steps that each of the vacation home rentals have to go through, safety, and safety-related, there's a building and safety inspection, septic tank, insurance, and the sign in front of them amongst other things. So there are steps within the policy that staff goes through to license the vacation home rental. Just by way of regional, regionally, Palm Springs, several years ago, had this on their ballot, and ultimately, it came forward to put more regulatory items in front of them, for them, so they're allowed, but they are, are more restrictions on them. However, in Cathedral City, just to use a comparison on the However, in Cathedral City, just to use a comparison, on the opposite side, they most recently adopted to eliminate, you know, those vacation home rentals over the next two-year period. And I know this council is gonna have, hear a lot of testimony this evening, and council has a tough job balancing the economics and the quality of life, and I respect that. And just one last thing from the staff's perspective on it, and kind of speaking a little bit as it relates to the T-Bid. You know, vacation home rentals is somewhat of the newer way to travel and to stay. And as you could see, within the staff report, you know, from 2015, when it began, you know, we started kind of slow. We collected in a year, almost $6,000. And, you know, the prior year, we'll say pre-COVID, we received $173,000 in a normal, quote-unquote, "normal" year. My fear is, you know, from a manager's perspective, from a staff's perspective, if we restrict, this is the new way of travel, so we'll, you know, the people aren't gonna go away, so instead of staying here in our city, they'll go elsewhere. So, anyway, that's just from a economic comment, and again, I understand the council has the quality-of-life decision and discretion. So, anyway, that concludes my staff comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Did you say anything about if any of them had code enforcement issues or anything?
Yeah, no code enforcement issues either.
I have another question. And so every vacation home rental has a sign or has signage?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Is that standard, so is, does it look the same?
Yeah, we, the city orders that, so you can't, as a vacation owner, order your own sign, it's a standardized sign.
Okay.
And then, the reason for Cathedral City to stop vacation home rentals, do you know?
You know, I didn't follow the issues surrounding Cathedral City. I apologize, I could research it and bring that back if this item goes forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, our first speaker is Patricia Knight. I'm sorry?
She had to leave.
Oh, okay. Ash?
Councilmembers, I'm a hotel owner as well as a vacation rental owner, and in the last six months, I acquired two vacation rentals. When the vacation rental ordinance was first introduced in the city of 29 Palms, it took us five years to get that ordinance corrected with the proper restrictions and regulations. And I opposed it as a hotel owner at that time. But I also sat with the working committee to form that ordinance, and to ensure that those regulations were correct, and that everyone, the hoteliers, as well as the vacation renters, as well as the community, were going to be treated very, very well with regard to vacation rentals. Having owned the vacation rental and having the sign out there in front of the houses makes a great difference. My neighborhood, I had three people that protested against having me half the vacation rentals, but I had a conversation with them. As the owner, I ensured them that there won't be any loud parties, there won't be any nuisance, there won't be anything. They even asked me to put that in my advertising, that this would not, it's not, will not accommodate that in this small community. I also wrote a paper in my MBA on vacation rentals in 2018. I studied it extensively before I went into it, because I found that as a small hotel, I was losing business to vacation rentals. And that obviously motivated me to go and purchase this too that came up right close to my house. And I can't say enough about it, but only positive things, the type of clientele that we get. They're very respectful, obviously, I can't speak for the whole tourism population. It is a segment, they call millennials, and that is the way that they want to go in terms of lodging, in terms of what they want to experience. In my studies, I found small towns like 29 Palms or the Joshua Tree regions are the ones that are winning on vacation rentals because they're destinations, because of the national park. And if you go to Big Bear, there is a huge influx of vacation rentals. It is supported, because again, that's a tourist destination. With regard to the 29 Palms ordinance and restrictions, it's excellently done. I think the city has done a great job in the inspections on what needs to be done by the homeowner, on the restrictions in terms of the noise level, in terms of the signage. I can't see any further restrictions being put onto it beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Krujat?
Oh, good, it's on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, of all the issues that is facing the city now and in the future, this is not one of them. I mean, the areas that have had problems in the past have been the unregulated areas like Joshua Tree, and I know Palm Springs had issues. We have an outstanding staff, and they put together an outstanding regulation. And that's why we've had very, very few problems. And vacation home rentals have been a positive for this community. I think that we haven't had any complaints about a vacation home rental, that's one thing. There has been a question about, do we limit the number? We set at a very low number, and I think economics will take care of that. I mean, I have a vacation home rental up on Sunrise that recently, he said, "I can't do it anymore, I'm going long-term." Because if there's too many, economics will sit there and say, "Reduce the number." So we don't even have an issue there. So I don't think there is an issue with this. As I said, there were no complaints in the past. I think recently, as a member of the Planning Commission, we had a complaint come in last night, and the issue was, he was concerned about possible noise. And well, we can't deal with possible, or could be, or would be. We have to deal with what happened, and we've had no complaints. We have an outstanding regulation. We have an outstanding staff that enforces it. I don't think there's an issue here to be discussed. I don't think there's anything we have to do right now. And I would like to add one thing, though, and I didn't get a chance to do it, to Mr. Clark and his staff, and the fact that he's gotten grants for us in the past, $2 million for our visitor center, and with what's happening on our park system, he and his staff has done a fantastic job, and I just wanted to add that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vino?
Mayor, councilman, I do want you all to know that I am not talking against vacation rentals, but I'm just saying against as to how we go about doing this. Mic off.
Mic off again?
Can I pull it off? Now? So basically, I am actually against how we go about it. You've heard the city manager say that we have 1.4% of the homes, 5,000 homes.
It must be the batteries.
Sorry. Unless you can try to speak it louder, can you? We have 1.4% of the homes that are vacation rentals. That number might look low. I'm a small businessman, I have people working at my place, I have the state. And I know my staff, and many other people's staff, do find a problem finding houses that are reasonably priced. You've heard one of the hotels say, "Can I just acquire two vacation rentals?" Let me ask you this, if you own a vacation home, I mean, if you own a home and you had rented one of my staff for between $9,000 to $12,000 per annum, and if you could make $30,000 to $36,000 per annum on a vacation rental, would you convert that into a vacation rental or a normal rental? I have a problem when people buy a house and convert that into a vacation rental. I don't mind if mom and dad have become an empty nester, and they want to rent roofs, so we turn that into a vacation rental. If you take an old house like the last time the lady came, she said she bought a house that was totally abandoned, and you convert that, put in the money, the city would make money, permit fees would be pulled, everything. I'm for things like that, but I am not for people buying four, five houses and converting them into vacation rentals. You heard the city manager say that we have leased compared to Joshua Tree and other cities. Those other cities don't have it, because we have it in town. So our staff is having a hard time finding places. I've shared with the city manager, and I think with some of the councilmen, that I have a fair amount of military people that come and stay at our hotels, and they look for places. I know in the last one month, three of them has moved to Palm Springs, and they've told me that they could not find reasonable rental here. I've done some research on my own, and I found out that the rental that the people are charging per square foot of a house is much higher than some of the other areas for you to purchase as long as the housing is lower. So I would like the council to revisit and think about the people that work in this town. Most of them are notably retired people, and they can't make it. And we're finding it very difficult to find suitable staff to work, because housing is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to talk? While he's doing that, I have a couple of letters that need to be read into the minutes. The first one is from Jennifer Rugirio and Indian Cove neighbors. Due to COVID concerns, I'm not able to attend city council meetings. The city has approximately 80 active VHRs within the city limits with 10 pending. The city has 9,681 housing units, of which 5,830 are single-family dwellings. Thus, VHRs represents 1.3% of single-family housing units in the city and 1% of all housing units. By comparison, Joshua Tree, unincorporated San Bruno County, has 1,160 VHRs, and Yucca Valley has 193. According to current VHR code, there are no limits on percentages and the location of VHRs in a community. For example, there are approximately eight permitted VHRs in Indian Cove with three VHRs located within a two-block radius, Ivan Paw, Old Dale, and Pine Spring Avenue. According to the current VHR code, a home could easily become surrounded by VHRs. Statistics provided by Yucca Valley and Joshua Tree, where there are numerous complaints filed on problems of VHRs, such as large parties, big outdoor fires in fire-restricted areas, trespassing on private property, and illegal ORV riding, to name a few, have little relevance to our community. Indian Cove is a densely populated area with homes close to one another. Sound travels fast and noise resonates throughout the community coming from VHRs and sometimes noisy neighbors. We already have a serious problem with a few illegal ORV drivers racing through our residential neighborhood on paved and unpaved streets, private property, and into Joshua Tree Park. These illegal ORV drivers have used intimidation tactics and harassments as a method to continue their illegal riding habits. Excuse me. Our quiet community does not want to add an overpopulation of VHRs to the list. We are already on alert due to increased crime in our neighborhood. Response to VHR total statistics from September's staff report in response to the revenue generated from VHRs due to required TOT, the total dollar amount listed in your September staff report for two quarters of the year, 170,511, 1,000, or, yeah, no, 145,974 are not all from VHRs. Statistics from the September staff report lists VHRs generating 89,417 of TOT. We encourage members of the city council to focus on quality of life for the community, not the dollar amount generated by VHRs. There are many alternative ways to generate revenue for the city of 29 Palms that does not include reducing the quality of life and safety of our residents. Please take a moment and try to understand our concerns. We have a diverse population of retired military, Marines in training. I have retired Marines and trainees on both sides of my house, and would like to keep it that way. Artists, retired folks, and desert families. We love our sick, quiet, and safe neighborhood. We are not against VHRs, we are for limitations, limitations that include but are not limited to the location percentage of VHRs allowed in a densely populated area like Indian Cove. We love our neighborhood and know our neighbors. Please don't turn our lovely community into a VHR zone. Please consider adding limitations on location and percentage of VHRs to the current city code. Please limit VHRs to no more than two within a two-block radius, especially in densely populated residential neighborhoods. Thank you for listening, we look forward to your decision. Respectfully yours, J. Rugirio, and members of the Indian Cove community. To the honorable members of the 29 Palm City Council, while there are multiple revisions to the VHR regulations which merit consideration, the most pressing issue and the area in which the regulations need to be amended now concerns the proliferation of VHRs in the Indian Cove neighborhood. Specifically, a limit needs to be set on the number of VHRs permitted to be operated in the neighborhood as a whole, as well as within the boundaries of its individual blocks. It should be noted at the outset that the staff report is in error in stating that there have been no complaints regarding the operation of VHR since the VHR ordinance was enacted. While complaints may not have been received by the city, complaints have been, most definitely been lodged with the operators, as per the signage in front of each such property. It is doubtful that the operators would choose to forward such complaints to the city, and therefore unsurprising that the city has not received any. VHRs alter the very character of neighborhoods. They bring with them the potential of excessive noise, increased traffic, and a host of other infringements on a neighborhood's peace, tranquility, and security. Although an increase in the number of permitted VHR operations within a community increases the potential for such disturbances, the regulations are presently constituted, set no limits whatsoever on their number. This is an omission which needs to be rectified. Fixing a limit on the number of VHRs in Indian Cove and its subsidiary boundaries is of immediate concern. Since it is adjacent to Joshua National Park, the Indian Cove neighborhood is particularly vulnerable to the incursion of VHRs. I am a resident homeowner in Indian Cove, and there are already multiple VHRs in the immediate vicinity of my home. I have no desire to be surrounded by them. The city needs to address the issue of unchecked VHR growth now, before the situation gets out of hand. Instead, there seems to be an inclination toward minimizing their impact. It is noted in the state staff report, for example, that VHRs constitute 1.3% of the single-family residents and 1% of the city's total housing stock. The implication being that, in light of such percentages, concern regarding the number of VHRs is unfounded. It needs to be pointed out in this regard that, at one time, the community of Joshua Tree only had 1.3% of its single-family residents and 1% of its total housing stock devoted to VHRs. Yet that community has since been inundated by such rentals. The residents of Indian Cove have no interest in becoming the next Joshua Tree. It is time for the city to act by supplementing the VHR regulations to set a limit of the number of VHRs permitted in the Indian Cove neighborhood and the individual blocks of its constituent streets. Sincerely, Michael Tausch. And I'll spell the last name, T-A-U-S-C-H. Okay. Are there anybody else in the public that wishes to comment at this time? Hold on, hold on. She had her hand up first back there. And fill out a green slip when you're done, and give it to the city clerk, thanks.
My name is Patricia O'Rourke, and I own a house on Ivan Paw, and there is a vacation rental on the corner, and I have had, I didn't, they're so, I haven't had any problem with them. They have a house with a fence around it, it's very nice, it's well-taken care of. So the person who said on that letter they're speaking for all Indian Cove people, I don't agree with that. I have more problems with my neighbors at this time than I don't even, Airbnb doesn't bother me at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next? Yep.
Okay. I have a vacation rental. Darcy Pascal. I have a vacation rental, and I had had it as a regular rental for a long time. And I'm very particular who's in this home. I can tell you, vacation rental is great. I have a lot of flexibility in the property. I can book it, block it off on my own, so when my family comes stay, they can stay with me. I can book it, block it off on my own, so when my family comes stay, they can stay with me. Any, we haven't had any problems with anybody. There's also another one on my block. If it does get a little loud, which means the neighborhood sounds different than it did the day before, it's temporary, it's only for a couple days. Not that anything has gotten out of hand, anything to call about, but that would be something that I would reflect on. If you have a tenant that's a problem, that's a long endeavor to try and get that tenant under control, or out, or whatever you need to do. Vacation rentals are very convenient, plus they're much more cost-effective. I would hope nobody would stop it. So, what's going on up in Indian Cove, that's great if everybody owns. But if they have tenants, then they face the same thing we all face. If a tenant's out of hand, it's a long, it's a long process. Vacation rentals, just a couple of days, worst-case scenario.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sorry to speak again, I'm sorry to bother you again, but to me, vacation rental is a necessary evil. I think you guys were here, most of you guys are here when the ordinance was passed, and I told you that my hotel will benefit from the vacation rental because people, the Airbnb people will be familiar with Twenty-Nine Palms, and I'm getting a lot. In fact, during the COVID days, I get eighty percent from Airbnb. Okay, however, there is a however on this one. Maybe there's a lot of people that are complaining about it. And so, if it's a suggestion to the city council, if we can, if you need to make a, if you make just a suggestion, we limit to one owner per vacation rental in town. That's an idea, okay? The other one is, at a minimum, I've talked to the city manager about this already, that the VRBO and they are also accepting the TOT to be collected by the city. And I don't know how much of these vacation rental owners are submitting their VRBO revenues to the city on the taxes. I don't know that. But what I'm trying to say is that, since the city decided to go Airbnb collecting the TOTs, my suggestion is, at a minimum, if you guys want to continue with the vacation rentals, at a minimum, please go after the VRBO to do, to collect the taxes for the city also. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there, my name's Eric Benindes, and we are with the Desert Beacon. We support about fifteen properties, one here in Twenty-Nine Palms, the rest are in Joshua Tree, Yucca County. We just want to say that, you know, we employ twenty people so far. We're really not officially open yet because we have to have a parking spot installed in the building we leased here in town. But we think that the Twenty-Nine Palms, that our client in Twenty-Nine Palms is a very responsible owner, and she, you know, she wants to contribute to the community, and we feel our staff, you know, also does the same. So, we'd just like to record the word in favor of vacation rentals as long as they're done properly.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hello, thank you for hearing me speak. My name is Maria Gutierrez. I work for the Desert Beacon, but I also worked as an independent contractor to clean Airbnbs. So, for the past year, I have been working to help support this industry. And although I know that a lot of times it comes into a bad light, I would like to kind of speak on behalf of others who do this kind of work. It's really flexible, it's really a great way for individuals who are having issues with COVID and, you know, employment to have a job and have a way of providing. In addition, I find that the individuals that are coming and staying in the Airbnbs, I can't speak for everybody, of course, but it seems like they want to get to know the area. They want to go to the national park, they want to enjoy food and beverages, and go to the gift shops. Some do party, and some are a disruptance. But I think as far as how it can benefit our community really outweighs the negatives. I just think that there does need to be some sort of regulations on them. But I don't know if regulating how many Airbnbs can be within the community is the best way to go about it. I think what the board has already devised as a means of controlling the scenario is a great avenue, and to explore that further might be a better way about it, rather than saying we've reached our cap and there can be no more Airbnbs. Because it all has to do with the property owner and how they choose to manage their properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mary Jane?
I wasn't going to say anything, but because of the way the conversation's gone, I thought I would. Mayor, council members, city manager. I'm in the mortgage business, and I just want to say that what I've discovered of the people coming to town, they're not coming to town, at least the people that are using my mortgage company, to buy Airbnbs. They're coming to town to live here. What they have discovered is that they can work from home. And what we're bringing into town are dress designers, costume makers. One couple, he's a trapeze artist. We're bringing into Twenty-Nine Palms, people are coming here, they're staying at the Airbnbs, they're falling in love with the community, and they want to live here. And the quality of people that are coming into town, you guys are going to all be very pleasantly surprised. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to bring it back to council for discussion, questions?
Well, so tonight is just a discussion, so actually, I'm a little surprised. I thought we'd have, because I was kind of keeping track, all the folks that came up were basically positive to three. We had three that were just basically saying they just want more regulation. So, I guess my question is, can we require the owner to report the complaints when they get them? I mean, I realize some of them won't, but is there a requirement that? Because some people will be honest enough and tell us, but some won't, but.
I mean, we could require, but I mean, you know, enforcement of that would be a difficult.
Yeah, yeah. And then, is, can we as ordinance limit the number in areas, like in neighborhoods? Can, is there, or is it just a free-market type thing? Or is it all or none in the whole community? Or can we say in one area, can there be restrictions?
Well, right now, there is no limitations in an area. Could it be done? Yes, I guess the question is, is how do you define that? So, we say Indian Cove is an example. So, what is, what is the boundaries? We have to draw that map, you know, to really say that, because we affectionately call areas in certain manners. We just have to draw that area, so.
Okay. And, oh, is the other thing is, do we, because Tony brought up the number of, how many, do we know how many multiple owners that we have that? I mean, is that something we keep track of? I'm just kind of curious.
I don't believe so. You know, I know Mr. Clark is back there, he's kind of coming forward, he may have some of the statistics. But do we know how many owners own multiple VHRs?
I think it's like a handful, maybe five have multiple owners. You know, we've permitted over a hundred, but the part of that duplicate is that every time a house changes hand and it gets a new owner, the vacation home permit does not stay with the property. The new owner has to reapply.
Has to reapply.
Process again.
Okay. Okay. Those are the questions I have, thanks.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What about, like, for example, since they fall like with hotels, making them commercial properties?
Well, the problem is, is you would go back and forth, because one owner today may want to live in it, it may be an owner-occupied house. The owner tomorrow may want to be a rental. The owner after that would be a vacation home rental. So, you'd be constantly changing zoning back and forth, so.
Can you even zone something, commercial property in a residential area?
So, zoning is about compatibility, right? So, you don't want to have commercial activities in a residential area, right? So, you know, you would not want to spot zone, you can't spot zone, but, you know, zoning is about compatibility. Probably as far as I should go on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, since the captain is out there, maybe he could explain a little bit about how they do answer these calls. That way, everyone has an idea of how, if there is a complaint, how they're handling it.
So, sorry, hold one second, I stepped away, and I didn't hear the entire question, so I apologize.
No, I think we discussed a little bit, the city manager did, about how things are reported, and how your deputies handle if they show up at a neighborhood when it's reported. I guess, because my question to him, I had called him earlier and asked him, like, they said, we don't, our code enforcement hasn't had any complaints. But I said, what about the sheriff? Do they get complaints, they don't tell us? So, I guess just kind of, just let us know how your handle those.
So, that is true, and, you know, between Travis and the city manager, we communicate a lot about Airbnbs, or short-term rentals, whatever, you know, whatever company they're dealing with. So, a lot of the information I get may come from multiple sources outside of the deputies. In general, when somebody calls the sheriff's department to complain about something, it's not always on the forefront that they're calling about a short-term rental. In fact, they're calling about a specific problem, whether it's a noise complaint, or trespassing, or things like that. So, deputies don't respond, and in the back of their mind, track or think that the problem exists because of the short-term property. They just handle the situation. And we don't keep a map of it, and we don't document that this particular residence at this time had an issue because of renters. So, the information I'm going to tell you is very broad stroke. And all the communications we have with the deputies and with the city staff, we know that occasionally there has been calls for service to a residence from someone else. A lot of times, when somebody calls, they will give their address and simply say, it's in my neighborhood somewhere. Well, depending on the type of call that we're responding to, noise complaints, things of that nature, it would be a very low priority. And sometimes it takes deputies hours, quite frankly, to get to low-priority calls. And by the time they get into an area, maybe the issue has resolved itself, and it's late in the evening, so a deputy may not make contact with anyone, you know, trying to avoid creating a problem that may have resolved itself. So, we don't keep track of that either. Outside of the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, we do have what we consider a nuisance property related to a short-term rental issue. That's one of those ones where deputies have gone so many times, we communicate from shift to shift, and we've all identified, hey, this is a problem house, and it's a problem because of a short-term rental. Those get labeled a nuisance property. And we work with code enforcement, in this case with the county. Should it ever happen here, we would work with code enforcement, communicate concerns with the property owners, work with them to resolve and prevent the issues in the future. And I can tell you, the home that we're dealing with in the county area is a massive home that holds up to probably thirty to forty people. That's probably the reason why it generates the problems it does. And of all the properties we have, I'm only aware of one nuisance property, the Morongo Basin. And it's that one particular one. We don't find too many of those. But, yeah, it's mostly about education, it's quality of life, working with the residents that claim there's a problem. We do keep track when we know about it. And at this point, I've not been informed of any nuisance properties related to short-term rentals in the city. Did that answer the entire question, sir?
Yes, especially when you said you were communicating with the cities and the city managers about if there's a nuisance, particular nuisance house, it would be, you would make it aware to our staff, so that answered my question, thank you.
Is there a problem with theft at these VHRs because they have that plaque in front of their house? Break-ins or anything like that?
None that I'm aware of specifically. I would hate to say that that's never been the case, it's just none that ring a bell with me anywhere in the basin at all, nothing like that.
And Mr. Mayor, that, you know, interestingly, and that we're talking about tonight, what the things that could happen, not the things that would happen, that was one of the concerns originally in the ordinance from a lot of the owners, saying, hey, you put a sign in the front of my yard, now burglars are going to know this is a vacation home rental, and they're going to break in because they know no one's there during the week, let's say. And again, that was one of those fears of what could happen, and as far as we know, that has not happened, so.
Okay. Well, my take on it, and I'm not against vacation home rentals, believe me. I voted for them because I know the quality of life, that people, when they go traveling, especially now with the millennials, they like to stay at these vacation home rentals. They don't like to go to hotels, and totally understand that. My question is the amount that we would have in the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. I don't want to get like Joshua Tree and have one thousand one hundred and sixty vacation home rentals in our city, I'm sorry. Eighty, we could probably go a little bit higher. My suggestion is, come back to us with a, with a, maybe we have five districts, maybe we can limit so many per district. We have a lot of people here that are for and against it. Maybe you can get like a committee together and have them come and sit with you guys and discuss it, and see if you can come up with a plan to where it's going to be okay with everybody. Maybe a limit on it, not, you know, I say more than eighty is probably, we probably could do more than that, but Yucca Valley is at one ninety-three, that to me is, are they filling them up? I don't know. We're closer to the national park here, maybe ours would at one hundred and ninety-three. But I would say just get a number and see if everybody would be okay with a number for the city with everybody involved, with the pros and the cons and everything of vacation home rentals. If you could maybe, you know, take these things here that talked, and maybe get them and have them meet with you and sit down and have a talk, and don't get angry with anybody, just a nice pleasant talk, and let's see if we can really hash this out and get it to where everybody is just happy with it. So, that would be my suggestion. Well, that's what, tonight was about discussion, so that, you know, that would be a start. Maybe some of the folks that have been coming to the planning commission aren't here tonight because the last couple of planning commissions have had people file complaints, but they didn't file a complaint with us. So, maybe those can be contacted and we can get their input also, just to kind of see where, you know, is there a happy ground where we can be? I'm with the mayor, I certainly hope we don't get to a thousand, I really don't. But there's also a double-edged sword of this, is, you know, the free market will keep, will keep regulating this. If somebody's not renting the thing because it's not a very good location, they're going to change it into just a long-term rental too, so.
And that's another thing, we are short on rentals, so they're coming in here buying these houses for vacation home rentals, so there goes our rental property possibility. So.
Well, one good thing about that, Mr. Mayor, though, is they do improve the property. Some of the properties they've been bought and improved are, might not have been improved because of that reason, so. But I just think maybe more discussion, like I said, tonight was just a discussion item anyway. But if we can, you know, try to get a little bit more information before we bring this back.
And if any one of the council members want to be there for the meeting, by all means, say you could. I mean, I guess I'll say I would.
I just want to make a comment that.
Just one.
It is necessary for us to try and find a happy medium, and it's not for us to dictate how many houses, it's what the people want. So, we have to somehow find that happy medium between the vacation home renters and the people who own homes. and the people who own homes within their communities.
I agree there. What'd you say, Cindy? Right. So I'll, is no more discussion out in the audience? No more questions? Bring it back here to council. All in favor of those?
Well, if there's no more other comments, just to make sure I understand it correctly. So, so do you want to, you want me to kind of get a committee together to kind of get those? You know, or you just want staff to make some recommendations? What do you?
I would like to see some of the pros and con people out there to sit with you as well.
So you want a committee, maybe?
Yeah.
So, so one of the things that, you know, potentially to make it, you know, to get at least council's input on it based on residents. I mean, do you, you know, maybe mayor pick three people and every other council member pick two persons? We have an odd number. And those are the people I could talk to, as an example? I mean, there's a lot of people, right?
Could you take these and just go through them and call them and say?
People you want me to talk to?
Well, they're the only ones that have shown up. Planning commission, maybe they have people that were, came to the planning commission.
That's a good starting point.
I think that's like put it out to the public. And then the people that are interested would show up, like these two people right here.
Well, kind of like what you did with the gas, when you were trying to do it in Indian Cove, put the gas pipeline up there, just have a committee forum. Now, obviously, it's going to have to be limited because of the amount of people in the room. But if they can just rotate coming in and make comments, if there's too many in it, because it looks like we can get, one, two, three, four, twelve people in there. So if we can get twelve people to show up for that, that would be great, so.
And we could do things.
I would start with that.
And we could do things electronically through Zoom and.
Oh, sure. So I'd be, I'd be like, if we put together a community.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with this? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So once I get that feedback, then I'll tabulate that feedback and just bring it back to the council.
Well, what I'd like to see that happened, though, is bring it back to us in a report or another discussion so we don't have, so we're not have to go right into making the judgment of changing laws or changing ordinances and resolutions right away. So we can have at least a discussion about it if it's necessary. I mean, if, that'd be my suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, I agree. Okay. Very good. Future council initiated items, council member Ogilvy? Council member Belterin? Council member Wright?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would like for staff to just bring a report back on all these propositions for the election.
Okay.
You know, so people get a better understanding of all of them.
Okay.
Well, maybe not all of them, but as many as you, because it's about a gazillion of them.
Yeah. The ones that concern the city, yeah. Yeah. And Mayor Protemin?
Not to stand, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I have none.
And Mr. Mayor, may I comment on one, please?
Okay.
So the rodent overpopulation, so staff is working through this and interestingly, you know, talking to the county today. So the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, for whatever reason, going back historically, the county has a vector control division. And vector control typically is mosquitoes, okay? But the county of San Bernardino also does rodent vector control. The city is not, is not part of the vector control district. So I'm getting some information on it. Now, that service doesn't come free, right? So there would be obviously a cost associated with it if we ultimately came into that vector control district. So I'm gathering some information on it, ultimately be in front of the council once I have that information.
Okay. Very good. And public comments? This is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out name and address slips and give them to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. And we have Terry Hinderleiter?
The reason I came here tonight is because of Mr. Luckel. He told me that he would have a code enforcement officer out to take care of a problem in my neighborhood. I talked to him twice. The man never showed up. And I'll say one other thing, when I came in here to the desk to talk to the code enforcement, the lady said, well, the code enforcement officer's out. And I said, well, you could get him in here on a telephone call, can't you? She said, well, he's out. And so another lady from the city came walking into the office and she said, hey, did you hear the city code enforcement officer quit yesterday? I said, lady, why couldn't you just tell me the truth? Well, now I still talked to him twice and hasn't got one iota taken care of. That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, city manager update?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple, couple updates. On a positive note, the Desert Storm Homecoming mural and Victory Prayed mural will begin its rehabilitation on October 12th. So the Action 29 has done a great job on their fundraising and that will be beginning on October 12th. So I think more will be coming. Leanne Clark sent a note to the city to kind of let us be aware. And I'm sure there'll be probably some kind of festivities surrounding that. With sales tax and TOT numbers coming in, we will be bringing back our budget. In probably October, our expectation of drop in revenue, although it did drop in revenue, wasn't as great as we thought it was going to be. So we're going to be bringing that back to the council for potential adjustments within the budget. Project Phoenix, as mentioned earlier, the undergrounding utilities is underway and that will be done by the end of this calendar year. The next step to the process is the site improvements. That site improvements will be going out to bid, will be going out to bid next month in October. Those site improvements are the parking lots, the roads, curb gutter and sidewalks, all those site-related improvements. So exciting news there. Then the building, the building will be going out for, buildings will be going out for construction in December. So very exciting, those two requests for proposals for construction contracts, both of which will be going out very, very shortly. On the COVID front, as the council and community is aware, the governor came out with this new color-coded system from purple to red, I think yellow to orange, I think is in its hierarchy. The county of San Bernardino currently is in purple, which is the, which is the worst, if you will, color, meaning less things can be open. We are very close to moving into the red, which is more things open. The county is predicting that, and again, trying to manage expectations and it's ultimately could go faster or slower. But, you know, it's probably within a couple of weeks, beginning of October, that we could see us entering into the red area. And by the rules that the governor has put out, then it's three weeks later. We've got to wait that we maintain that before you can actually open up things. So, so that, you know, translates into mid to late October for red to take effect. The flip side of it is San Diego is starting to see this now. San Diego got into the red earlier and they're starting to slip back. So immediately, if you hit those numbers, when you slip back, it's immediately closure. When you go into the good area, it's, you've got to wait three weeks. The county has, though, however, and I was happy that at least they're working to fight for us, working to fight for us in the Morongo Basin, Big Bear and Needles. The county put together a pretty good presentation to State Department of Public Health. And interestingly, the, we always hear how large the county of San Bernardino is, but they put it in a graph, in a visual. You know, it's the size of New Jersey, Delaware and, what's the third state? Maybe Connecticut. Anyway, we're very large, in other words, right? And so that was one of the presentations of the county or of the state. You can't judge, you know, us 100% in one way, in one color. Our rates here in our community are a lot lower than the average in the county. The state said, good points, we'll consider. So, you know, we'll, you know, we'll wait to see from the state. They didn't come back and say no, nor did they say yes. So at least the county is pushing and fighting for us rural areas. However, there isn't any update at this time. Mr. Clark, if you could give us an update on Pioneer Park and Not Sky Park as far as the Prop 68 presentation, please?
Sure. Grants, grants, more grants, right? So we have been working for the last six weeks on Pioneer Park or whatever the name of that park will be. Starting with our community engagement, really coordinated by the folks at Park and Rec that are amazing job. We've had five meetings onsite at the theater, that's one of the requirements of the grant, that you hold five meetings. We've also had an online survey. We've had an online design shirt as well. And so we're starting to develop the concept plan based on the input from the community. One of the things that was kind of at the top of the list, almost 80%, was the splash pad. But we still want, we still think the ideal place to put the splash pad is Not Sky Park, as was originally proposed in that application. So we're still pursuing both parks. And we'll hold another round of meetings for Not Sky Park, just to touch base, make sure nothing's changed in the plan or would change because of whatever recreational facilities that are going into Pioneer Park. Another thing that was kind of heavily requested was a lot of walking trails, biking trails, was way up there. Picnic shelters, playgrounds, of course, the normal stuff. And also an event space for outdoor concerts and those types of venues. So one of the concept works about, about including kind of an outdoor stage and companion to Theater 29, you know, connected right to it. They could also function as like an outdoor performance, outdoor concert, outdoor space. But using something like a soccer field as the place to sit on or stand on so that it has a dual function of both a recreational feature and also a place to hold events and venues and things like that. So working on the concept plan, right now, we're targeting October 3rd, I believe it is, if I'm correct, the Saturday around noon to maybe present some alternatives. Still need to confirm that. And we're thinking about maybe having tacos as well to go away, to get some people out and make some comments on it. We have until December 14th to put both of these together. So there's still a lot of work to do on each one. But we're making, we're making a lot of good progress.
Very good, thank you.
Mac will be there. He's got it written down.
Are you done? Are you done? You are done?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to step on your toes here. You want to talk some more, you just? No, no. Anybody else have any comments for the good of the city of Twenty-Nine Palms? If there is none, I'd like to remind everybody, there is no meeting on September 22nd. I will adjourn to the next meeting on October 13th. And I am going to adjourn in honor of all the firefighters working hard to put out all the fires here in California and the whole United States of America. God bless them all. Meeting adjourned.